This is CJ Thomas, Town Council Chair, calling our May 26, 2020 Town Council meeting to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, I'd just like to say we celebrated Memorial Day without our traditional parades this year, but we did hold a very nice ceremony in front of Town Hall in honor of all those who fought and died for our country. If you'd like to see that video, you can go online to the town website at www.farmington-ct.org. In honor of our veterans, reach out to anyone you know who might be alone or lonely this week and let them know you're thinking of them. Now we'll move on to public comment. We have no written comments that were sent in, so we move on to public comment. Anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand. You have five minutes. State your name and address before speaking. Seeing none, we will move on to consideration of special topics, Item D. We are beginning with a presentation from the Hillstead Museum. And joining us this evening, we have Dr. Anna Swinburne, Executive Director and CEO, Lavelle Thompson, incoming Board President, and Bill Watson, Chair of the Capitol Campaign Committee. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Hillstead. And, excuse me, I'll just remind you, when you want the slide, just say "slide" to have it changed.
Perfect. Thank you. This is Anna Swinburne. I'm the Executive Director and CEO of Hillstead. First off, I would like to say thank you to the council for hosting us today. I will admit that we had intended to host you at the museum for a nice reception and a chance to share with you our plans for the coming year and the coming months. But unfortunately, that wasn't to be. And like I tell my staff every day, we're going to focus on what we can do and not what we can't do. So I am going to be speaking today with Lavelle. We will switch off on certain slides. And I'd like to begin where our story begins, back in 2015. At that time, the museum board and leadership decided that they were going to launch a strategic plan to achieve an aspiration to become a preeminent cultural destination, not just in the town, but in the state and the country. And their findings concluded that the museum needed to offer adaptable spaces for engaging and educating our visitors, for modernizing our amenities, expanding accessibility, and increasing our financial support for these new initiatives. So as some of you know, our founder was an architect long before women were allowed to go to architecture school. Theodate Pope Riddle, born in 1867 and died in 1946, was the designer of this home for her family. Knowing that it was her breakthrough piece in her artistic and architectural career, it is of preeminent importance to us at Hillstead that we honor her design in anything that we undertake. So the slide that I'm showing you now, the area in purple is the part of the property that we are planning to adaptively reuse all of the existing structures which are adjacent to the historic house. To do this, we have engaged an architecture firm by the name of Centerbrook, of Centerbrook, Connecticut, and have been working with them for several years on this plan. So it is our intention at this point to describe in detail what we're going to do, as well as our ultimate reasoning and initiatives for doing this. So if we could move to the next slide, please. So this is essentially a cheat sheet of our aspirations for this project. The area in purple that you saw in the last slide, we refer to as the historic carriage barn on the property. And that is going to be the space that we use and we adapt so that we may create an exhibition gallery, be able to welcome visitors, and to provide additional opportunities to explore Hillstead's history beyond what we have now in the capacity of the historic home. And I'm going to pass it to my colleague, Lavelle. Next slide, please.
Thank you very much, Anna. So the first picture that we see is one of the artist's renderings that was received from Centerbrook, from the architect. And it shows the familiar sight as you walk from the car park towards the, what is currently a breezeway and is going to become a much more engaging and welcoming entrance and greeting to visitors. You'll see that we have, the doors are still going to be retained, but we're having infills at both ends of this breezeway in metal and glass that will help with climate control, first of all, and make the space actually usable space, not just a place that you walk through with a good gust of wind at your back. So if you go to the next slide, please, you'll see, this is a photograph of the way things look now. We have concrete floors. There's an old carriage there. There's a soda machine, rafters. It's pretty dull, not particularly inviting. On the right-hand side, you can't quite see, but we currently have a little space that is used typically for children's activities. It's unheated. It gets a bit chilly, so not really very welcoming at all. If we look at the next slide, please, this is a rendition of the after, where things are looking a lot more inviting. We have, we're going to move the museum shop and visitor welcoming area to the space that's currently the unheated children's workstation. And we are maintaining elements of the old, of the original building, but then we're having very careful and thoughtful insertions of modern materials to make a clear delineation between what is original and historic and what is modern and now. But we certainly hope that this will provide a much clearer idea to any visitor to the museum of exactly who they need to speak to first and how they can get the information. We're not going to dwell in detail on these pictures, but I don't know about you. When I go to an art gallery or a museum, one of the first things I want to do is freshen up a little bit. I want to be able to perhaps hang my coat up, put my bag away, buy my ticket, and then off we go. And so what we're doing as part of this process is doubling the number of available toilet spaces, including several family and accessible facilities which will be in and around this core area. We'll have a place to hang your coats and a place to check your bags as well. So little details, but things which help transform and make it a much more welcoming and user-friendly experience. So if we go to the next slide, we have a bigger view of the gift shop. Here, we've relocated it and more than doubled the space that is going to be available, which will enable much more convenient browsing, a clearer vision of what articles are available for sale, and will absolutely drive increased revenues. And I think that there's an opportunity to do a better job of sharing items available for sale from local craftspeople or people with a connection to Farmington and to the Hillstead in particular. If we move to the next slide, please. This is the carriage barn. This is really the beating heart of the transformation. As Anna mentioned at the start, we're looking very, very much for an exhibition space. And at the moment, we're exhibiting, again, dirty stained concrete floors. We had cars stored here during the time of the Pope's occupation. You can see some of their original refrigerators there against the yellow wall. And so not a very, again, unheated and not a very welcoming place. And it's generally used just to store stuff because nobody sees it. On the next slide, however, if please, you'll see the after, quite a transformation. We now are going to be in a fully climate-controlled, state-of-the-art museum gallery space, but very flexible, able to support conferences and presentations, hanging works of art, objects on pedestals. We can have temporary exhibitions which will completely transform this place. But equally importantly, you'll see on the right-hand side, we're retaining the original doors and we're going to enclose them in glass so that you will be able to still see the house and the grounds. But we'll be able to do that in the context of a world-class museum situation. So I'm now going to pass this back to Anna because this is much more her territory. Next slide, please.
I think Anna's on mute still. Hello. Sorry, I was a little slow to the button there. I apologize. So one of the things that this will allow us to do at Hillstead is to host temporary exhibitions, both exhibitions that we will organize as a museum and exhibitions that we will partner with other museums around the country and internationally to host. We have dipped our toe into this water a little bit in the historic house, very modestly in the past few years. And what we have received from feedback on those just further confirms our desire to create the ability to make an exhibition and to present it in a way that is acceptable and safe and in a climate-controlled environment. So we've described what we're going to do with the space. And now I'd like to talk for just a few minutes about what will happen in that space. So after the bricks and mortar transformation that we've outlined, what exactly will we be doing with it? Lavelle mentioned we're going to have programs. We're going to have lectures. Our aspiration is really to expand our audience and to be able to educate individuals of all ages and all different types of interests. So we will have exhibitions that are both related to Hillstead and its story. And here I give you three examples. From top left, the dialogue between two prominent pioneering female creators of the early part of the 20th century, our founder, Ms. Riddle, and Beatrix Faran, who has created the sunken garden that is on the estate. It's one of only two Beatrix Faran sunken gardens in the state of Connecticut. And then if you move to the right, you will see an exhibition on Mary Cassatt, who we, many of us know her as an artist. However, what we don't have a better picture of is her larger historical role, that she played a very prominent position in forming some of the most important American collectors of her day about French art and French Impressionism. And when I, I can think of two off the top of my head. One is the Havemeyer family, which was the major benefactor of the Metropolitan Museum of Art. And the other is the Potter Palmer family of Chicago. Mary Cassatt was instrumental in helping them build their collections as she was an advisor to the Pope family here in Farmington. It didn't mean that Mr. Pope always listened to her advice, but she gave him advice nonetheless. The bottom exhibition is an exploration of Japanese prints and how these prints influenced French Impressionists and their contemporaries at the time of the last quarter of the 19th century. May I have the next slide, please? And this is an exhibition idea that we are hoping will be our, how shall we say, sort of inaugural debut into this world. At the moment, we are planning to host our first exhibition either mid to late 2021. We will aspire to have two to three exhibitions a year. And because no one on the staff, with the exception of myself, has worked on exhibitions of this nature, we need a little time to train up and learn how to organize and host these exhibitions. So some of the ideas I showed you in the previous slide are ones that we will explore to hold in 2021 in preparation for 2022, which is the 75th anniversary of the museum as an institution. And one of the things that is lesser known about the Pope family and their collection was that through the course of Mr. Pope's life and soon thereafter, many of the works that he had owned himself, he had either sold or traded or given away. And on this slide, what I'm showing you, a collection of Renoirs, Monets, Pissaros, De Ghas, are some of those works of art that he formerly owned and which are now located in major institutions around the country. The MFA in Boston, the Philadelphia Museum of Art, one of them is in the Bowdoin College Museum of Art. And what we would like to do to celebrate the 75th anniversary is for the first time, bring all of these artworks together again to have a reunion of his collection with the works that have been retained in the house. May I have the next slide, please? So we're going to now step back and do another one of the before-after photographic comparisons that Lavelle had done. We are intending in the art gallery to have exhibitions of actual objects, whether those objects are of art historical importance, they may be of historic importance. But in a perpendicular space to that art gallery is what we call the drive shed. And this is the before photograph. You can see the wall on the right side, that this space is open to the air. May I have the next slide, please? And this is the after photograph. We are going to wall in that wall that was, or we're going to close in the wall that was on the right-hand side, and create a new media space that is complete with technological exhibitions that can rotate frequently and will enable all of our visitors to explore a whole variety of Hillstead history and aspects of the institution and its past, as well as the town and the state's past. And they will be able to do it at their own pace and according to their own interests. May I have the next slide, please? One of the last things that we're going to do in this adaption of the space is, for those of you who have been to Hillstead, there is a large room on the eastern side, at the very end, called the makeshift theater. And there's going to be minimal intervention here. We're going to create a door so that you may access the makeshift theater from the exterior of the building and not have to go in the main entrance and wind your way through. But it's also, we are also going to create a sectioning off of the space so that behind that space, we may have modular furniture that is easily taken out and easily put back together so that we can have a rotating classroom for all ages and all types of art-making activities. May I have the next slide, please? And so what we're showing you here is a bird's eye view of the architectural plan. And this is the complete after. You will recognize from the bottom part of the slide, the stone walkway, which was the, which is the bird's eye view of the entrance that Lavelle showed you initially. And you can pass up that walkway into the entry hall with the gift shop on the right. You will see that we have multiple stations with the WC. We are very proud of the fact that we are, according to regulation, we are providing double the number of water closets that are required for this space and that we are providing all types, male, female, and family bathrooms. You will also see on the other side of the entry hall, if you keep traveling north on this slide and hang a left, that will be the reception gallery that will lead you ultimately into the art gallery. And at that art gallery, we didn't speak about it initially, will be about 1,400 square feet, full open, inside of which we can create temporary movable walls that can be done in a bespoke fashion depending on the exhibition that we are presenting. If you go south from that, down from the light colored room to the darker room, you will see the makeshift theater from above. And then if you head again all the way north to the top of the slide and then to the right, that is the interactive space that will be the new media gallery. May I have the next slide, please? And I'm going to pass it back to Lavelle.
Thank you very much, Anna. So we've, clearly, we're working inside an historic building and a building that's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So we're terribly sensitive to the legacy and to what Theodate created for us. So we've worked very closely with the state Historic Preservation Office to ensure that any interventions that we make to the fabric of the building are either minimal or reversible, shall we say. So even though when we finally entertain you at the, at the new facility or the new space, we won't be walking directly on the concrete floor with its stains and dust of ages. We'll be walking on a surface on top of the floor, which could, if need be, at some later date, be removed, and the floor retained. And that goes for everything that we saw, those, the refrigerators, whatever, it's all there. But moving back to more important things. So as we mentioned, there's going to be climate control throughout all of the spaces that we've talked about, the new media space. I think that's the greatest transformation in that we're going to be walling off that area, which is currently open to the air on both sides. But it's going to be, we're trying to retain as much flexibility as possible to support the nature of this space, being responsive to the fabulous views that we have looking from that new media space north towards Prattling Pond area and Route 4. So we're trying to retain flexibility with how we enclose these spaces. I mentioned the glass doors. We keep going back to the restrooms. And then we're also completely revamping the kitchen space to make it much easier for catering services to come in. And it's not a prep kitchen. It's a final warming kitchen and serving kitchen. And we'll continue to use the existing paved parking lot. What you don't see on here is everything that makes this happen, including updates to the sewer works, electricity, and so on. But these are the key areas. Next slide, please. So project timeline, we're looking forward very much to breaking ground, breaking ground in sort of technical terms, this summer. And so that we can keep the museum functioning and capable as soon as we're able to open for interior activities. The work is going to be split into two phases, which will run consecutively. And on the first phase, we'll be dealing with the area on the north side, so the gift shop, the new media space. And we're moving the blue stone tile flooring from inside the driveway, drive shed, into the stable terrace. And then, once that work is complete, we'll flip and we'll then make the oval work to the makeshift theater and then the creation of the exhibition gallery. The target completion date is, it's not going to take that long, I say confidently. But we certainly are looking to be able to, as Anna said, to have our first trial run of an exhibition in mid to late 2021. Next slide, please. Anna, can you, do you want to run through the slide?
Of course. Yeah. So what you are probably all wondering about is what we have conceived as the benefits, we've talked about the benefits to the museum, but the benefits to the community at large. Maybe some of you have heard Hillstead is referred to as the hidden gem. We would like to break out of that cocoon of recognition, if you will, and become the institution, sort of the world-class museum that we in fact are, and to both on a regional, national awareness level, that we can be recognized and served for what it is that we have in our collections and our property and can offer to the public as a resource. We are greatly anticipating an increase in revenue, not just from membership, but from both new and repeat visitation once we, once we complete this architectural and adaptation process. We believe that that is a key to sustaining Hillstead as a national historic landmark and well into the future. The exhibitions that I showed you in the previous slides, one could criticize them as somewhat art historical and stuffy, which, to a certain taste, they are. But it is our intention that we will create a program and a calendar of programming that is exciting and dynamic and that can reach as broad of an audience as possible. We want to become a cultural hub in the region, both by what we organize and our ability to collaborate with other organizations within not just Farmington and Farmington Valley, but the greater Hartford area, as well as the state and even beyond. So it is our aspiration that this particular transformation will catapult us into a level of recognition and an ability to offer programming as we never have been able to before. And as you can imagine, with that investment, there will be reciprocal and almost a domino effect of advantage with the increased tourism that will come directly to the Farmington Valley and the greater Hartford area. Is there another slide? Excellent. So before you hit the arrow to play, I just would like to preface this. This is an animation that was created for us by our architects. It's quite brief, but it is engaging in the sense that it will bring together the various pieces that we discussed in a very virtual way. So if you could please start it, I would be grateful. So we've finished our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I would like to close in stating that this is a project that has been in the works for many, many years. And many individuals have devoted an exceptional amount of time to bringing this dream into the realm of reality. And we couldn't be more excited about the fact that we are on the precipice of launching a construction site and having this become something that is part of Hillstead. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I will open it up to any of our council members who have any questions. If you would just raise your hand. I would, here we go. Edward.
Hi. Thank you for the presentation. And my apologies for being late. I got thrown off of the holiday yesterday. But when do you anticipate, and I didn't really catch the part in terms of the funding for your project, if you could talk about that a little bit and talk about once construction begins, when you anticipate for this new project to be completed?
So let me start with your last question. We believe that this project will begin in June. We were told by our architects prior to the closure from the pandemic that it would be a nine-to-10-month project. We now believe that it's going to take over a year, to be conservative, because it is almost impossible to predict any interruption of supplies or services that may happen through the course of the construction. And to answer your first question about funding, a few years ago, we received a $1.75 million grant from the DECD in Connecticut, which will go to a portion of our grant from the DECD in Connecticut, which will go to a portion of our construction costs, the rest of the money we have raised from private donations, as well as foundations. And we, at the moment, are about to launch this public, we're about to launch this project publicly, not just the renovation and the construction, but also the capital campaign that goes along with it. We were supposed to have our press conference on April 23rd, and now we are just waiting for the green light from the state as to when we can gather in a group of at least 100, because that's how many people we're anticipating having. So when we make that launch, we will announce that our total capital campaign goal for the project, as well as the endowment that goes with it, because they are really two parts of a whole, there's, there are the construction costs, but then we need to raise the endowment funds to make all of the programming that will happen in this building possible, that that total is $6.9 million. To date, we have raised in excess of $3.4 million.
That's great, thank you, Anna.
Sure. We're very proud.
Okay, we'll go on to Brian now.
Well, thank you, this is Brian Connolly. I think the plans look beautiful, and I'm very familiar with the space, and I think it's very exciting for you. I was interested in two things, and that is, have you engaged with other Farmington businesses to, to bring this to fruition and to engage them in partners to further what you're doing here at Hillstead? And for example, I saw that you have, you're now adding a galley, or, you know, not a prep kitchen, but a warming kitchen, that I don't think there was ever one there, was there?
There was, but to call it modest would be kind. It's, it is probably the barest minimum of a kitchen that could be offered, so.
I've often thought that it would be nice if you guys could serve a lunch up there to attract people and keep them there for a while. Would you be able to do that with this, with this new setup?
And one of the things that we are exploring is how we could offer that, the, those type of food services, so whether it's a, a buy-and-sit-down, you know, sort of takeaway on your own, or whether it's something where the food is prepared there, we are, we are enhancing the kitchen that is there, we're expanding its size and enhancing it so it can be, it will be able to function as a, as a catering kitchen, but we haven't quite gotten to the, to the final step of partnering with a food service so that we could provide food. One of the challenges, Brian, is that our visitorship is incredibly uneven in its flow, so it is difficult to predict on a food service basis when people will be there, when they won't be there, and we've experimented in the past with a few different options, but it is something that as soon as the construction is finished, one of the next steps of how to reach the ultimate goal that we would like, would be talking to various individuals. We, it's not something we can handle ourselves, but we are looking to partner.
Oh, no worries, just a, just a question I was curious about, but I really love the, the rotating galleries that you're doing and the interactive galleries, I think that's going to make it dynamic, and as you said, a good reason for people to continue to come back more often, which is going to be wonderful.
Well, we, we do want people to come back, come back more often, and also stay for a little while, so that, that notion of being able to give them sustenance for their bellies as well as their minds and their spirits, you know, it's, it's a critical part of, of visitor interaction in the space. So it's something that is on our minds, we just haven't quite gotten to the solution for that particular challenge, but it is on our list.
But I love where you are.
We, we're happy too, really, there were moments when we, we were, I don't want to say down, but there have been challenging moments, and we couldn't be happier about being at the spot where we are now, about to bring this into reality.
Thank you.
And now go to Peter Mastropatista.
Hi, Peter Mastropatista, I'd just like to say, I, I love what I see here, it's a long time coming, I think this is just wonderful for the, for the town and for the valley with this new addition and facilities that you're going to put on, I, I love it. Just one nuts and bolts thing, which has probably already happened, it already went through TPZ and you're good to go to break ground?
Yes, so we have, through the course of the spring, we have, well, it actually started in the fall as well, Peter, so we met with TPZ, we met with the historic district, we have the various licenses and permits that we need, everything is good to go.
That's wonderful, well, congratulations, and I look forward to the completed product. Thank you.
We'll now move on to Chris Fagan.
Okay, thank you, this is Chris Fagan, and Peter, you, you took my logistical question out, so I won't answer that, then, then I just have a, then I just have a general comment, and, and, you know, I grew up in the, you know, New Britain, Kensington area, my wife's from, I'm sorry, we're local, we're empty nesters, and over the last year, we've taken opportunities to do sort of day trips around Connecticut, one of them was last year was to see the Georgia O'Keeffe Museum exhibit at the New Britain Museum of American Art, and it was fascinating to see that we've taken for granted over the years what a gem we had over there. And this presentation, Anna, has made me really, really excited and reinvigorated me to what the Hillstead Museum has to offer culturally to our community in the greater Hartford area. I mean, it's, I just couldn't be happier to see, you know, go through this and realize, and hopefully we can get the word out of what, what a hidden gem we have and shed that moniker going forward, but I just want to thank you and everybody, Lavelle, for all your efforts, and it, it really excites me to, to see this.
Thank you, Chris. I do have to say, I am biased, I'm an art historian, I'm a curator who is, for 10 years, curator at MoMA in New York. I have, I couldn't be more proud of the fact that my town has an institution like this. It's, and, and I think it's even more than the hidden gem, I've, I've only been the director there for a short period, and very quickly I realized, it's not a hidden gem, it's like the great unknown. And so if I accomplish anything through the course of my tenure, I would like to, I would like to put that in our rearview mirror, because it's, to, to give people just a point of reference, there are only three museums in the country that have two Monet haystack paintings. One is the Museum of Fine Arts in Boston, the other is the Art Institute of Chicago, and the third is our little Hillstead. It's, it's something to be exceptionally proud of, and this is such an exciting moment, we are going to transform into a cultural hub to be even more proud of.
No, I, I agree, couldn't agree more, and as I said, I'm just really excited going through this, sitting through this presentation, I saw, great job, good luck, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna and Lavelle, CJ Thomas again, and, and thank you for the incredible presentation, the changes do look fantastic, I have no doubt that we will not be unknown or hidden as you move on with this, just some incredible, again, changes coming forward. And also, in the times we're living in right now, it looks like you've got a tremendous start to your fundraising, just about halfway there is very impressive, so hopefully people will see this, and be anxious to add a few more funds for the capital endowment for the 75th anniversary. So we wish you very well, good luck with the campaign, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you so much. We look forward to welcoming you all in the, the completed structure.
Thank you, we look forward to actually seeing you in person.
We will, we will have that reception, we promise.
Promise.
We promise.
Catered.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to our next agenda item, which would be D2, the Town Manager's Update, and I will move that over to Kathy Blonsky.
Good evening, everyone. I have just three things to report on today. The first one is a discussion of the strategic plan, the second is the COVID-19 update, and the third is the Memorial Day Parade. The first one is about the Memorial Day Parade, as you all know that the parade had to be canceled this year, but the town did coordinate with the veterans and to air a special virtual ceremony that's online and on public access. The ceremony was prerecorded and edited to include some nice shots around town and features a student singing the National Anthem. So I would encourage everyone to take a look online for the ceremony, and many thanks to our veterans and to Anna in our office that helped coordinate that. The second item I wanted to talk about was just giving a brief update on the COVID-19. I have two things to report on, one is the town operations, the Phase 1 reopening of the town hall. Phase 1 of the State of Connecticut reopening plan was announced last week. We, over the next several weeks, we will begin to phase the reopening for the town of Farmington. At any phase of this reopening plan, if the public health metrics deteriorate, we may have to revert to stricter guidelines. This will be an incremental process, the safety of our employees is our number-one goal. Phase 1 of the reopening plan will allow for enough time to learn and adopt new behaviors. You'll see in the town hall, when it's open, that there's enhancements to our public, to our safety measures, maintenance, maintenance staff is sanitizing the offices in the public areas, physical barriers have been placed, or will be placed in the offices, so that when we do have public access to the buildings, proper social distancing will be maintained. During Phase 1, we will continue to refine a thoughtful and comprehensive plan to resume in-person, in-person services to the public. For now, town offices will be, remain closed to the public. And we also, with the COVID-19 update, on May 21st, CJ Thomas and I wrote an update to the town residents, another letter, and in that letter, we discussed that, about the Memorial Day Parade, we gave an update about the fiscal year budget 2021, we talked about the tax deferment program, and everyone should have received their postcard, yellow postcard in the mail, we gave a Farmington High School Building Committee update, and we did an update on the closures and business reopenings, and then again, a reminder of social distancing. CJ and I also did a video out at the trail for some reminders about some social distancing tips, and that's online also. And I think that's it for my report, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
If anyone has any questions, please raise your hand at this time.
What? Oh, I forgot, I didn't talk about that.
Okay, since I see no hands yet, I'm going to turn it back over to Kathy to discuss the strategic plan.
I'm sorry, Kathy Blonsky, I did forget to mention the strategic plan. I would ask that the council members each review their strategic plan that we approved in January, based on some of the budgetary actions that the council took, the, some of the goals will not be able to be accomplished. My thought was is that I would go through the plan and do strikeouts and copy, strikeouts, and do maybe different priority levels or things that maybe would have to be pushed to, for another time, and then in June, at the June council meeting, we could review the strategic plan and adopt, and, adopt a new one or amend the strategic plan. So that would be my thoughts. CJ, I don't know if you have any comments about that?
Yes, I think certainly in light of everything that's been going on, and the time that's been spent on our new normal COVID-19, we will have to make some amendments to the strategic plan. So I would recommend to the council members, Kathy will give us her thoughts, but take a look through, and if you see items in there that you feel won't likely be able to be accomplished this year for one reason or another, you can just bring it forward and send Kathy an email when she's putting together her list. So now I will turn it over, if anyone has any questions, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will move on to item E, new business. We have no new business, so we have item F, executive session, of which we also have none. But before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I will leave you with our comment for this evening, the quote is from George S. Patton, "It is foolish and wrong to mourn the men who died, rather, we should thank God such men live." Now we'll ask for a move to adjourn.
Peter Mastropatista, I make a motion to a move to adjourn the May 26, 2020 meeting.